Like we were sharing yesterday, you know, in chapter one of Revelation, it mentions about how the Lord gave us this book of Revelation. You know, there is a, sometimes there's the feeling that, you know, I don't need to know very much of this. Because I just need to focus on today. Sometimes there's the idea that we don't really need to know very much about the book of Revelation. It's too complicated and I just need to know about today and what I need to do. But on the other hand, what we are reading, you have to realize that the book of Revelation is the word of God. It is part of the Bible and it's actually very important. Because like we read yesterday in chapter one, verse three, it says, blessing is he who reads and those who hears the words of this prophecy. So we have to read it, we need to hear about it. And it says, and those who keep those things. So we need to keep it. It's still the word of God. So we, how do you keep all this? I think, I hope that by the end of this weekend, we'll understand how to keep it. It says, and those who keep the things which are written in it for the time near. And I know for me, when I was reading through this, it just reminded me of how much I don't fear the Lord enough. You know, and those twenty-four elders and the four living creatures that are before the throne, they see him, they see God on the throne every day. They can't stop proclaiming holy to be holy. Because when you see him, you see how holy he is. You know, and um, today, a lot of uh, you, you read the news and you see things happening and you think there's so much evil in this world. Why isn't God doing anything about it? And we have to, when we read the book of Revelation, we will understand that he will do something about it. He will, he will judge it very harshly. But it will happen at a certain time. He has a time when he will do everything. Everything he does follows a certain timing. And he is actually very merciful to us, to give us all the people of the world. Even if they're evil people, he gives everybody a chance to turn and repent. And that's very important. He is very merciful. He gives us so much time to change our ways. You know, but there will be a time when he says, that's it. Time's over, we have to, now we have to wrap it up. We have to finish everything. So um, just very quickly. So we saw that in the timing, after the Lord ascended to the throne in chapter five of Revelation, the angel said, who can open the scroll? The scroll with the seven seals. And the seven seals, they represent all the work that God's going to carry out and bring about in the, till the end of the age. Okay, and so uh, after, and of course, we know that the Lord Jesus, we talked about this last night, he appeared as the lamb that was slain and only he is qualified to open the seals. Because he is the only man who is without sin. So only he is qualified to judge. None of us is qualified. Right? Only he is able to. And so after he ascended to heaven, he began to open the seven seals. He started with seals one, two, three, four, five. We saw, and the only one that has not been opened yet are six and seven. So if you look here, in this timeline, the, basically the, the time, when you read the book of Revelation, the timing, everything you can follow along with the, the seven seals, the seven trumpets, and then the seven bolts. It always goes like this. First, the seven seals, the seventh seal starts the seven trumpets. And then the seven trumpet starts the seven bolts. Okay, so, and there was a question, what is that? So that is a seal. So uh, you know, we, back then, I guess, they, uh, when they closed up a letter or a scroll, a paper, they would put a drop of hot wax and then use a press, something to seal it closed. Right? That would close up the letter or the scroll. So that's, that's what those are. It's just a drop of hot wax that's been pressed. And so in order to open this, a scroll, a scroll is like, you know, there's a piece of paper, something written and it's rolled up like this. You can't see what's inside because it's been closed up with the wax seals. So they have to break the seals open and then you can open it up to see what's inside. That's what they did. Okay, so that's what it's talking about. So there was, the angel presented a scroll, but they couldn't see what's inside because it was closed and only the lamb could open it up. And the opening of the scroll was all of this. It's all the things that the Lord is going to bring about. So um, and then there was another question. Uh, we had another uh, we had another chart here. Let me share this as well. Okay, so here you can see the timeline as we were saying, that, that during the, in Daniel chapter nine, it mentioned that from the time of the rebuilding, the command to rebuild Jerusalem until all the prophecies are fulfilled until the Lord comes back, basically, and the completion of everything, which is about here, there would be seventy weeks. And each week represents not seven days, but seven years. And so right now, we know that sixty-nine weeks or sixty-nine times seven years has passed. And we are waiting for the last seven years. And then in verse twenty-seven, it says that the last seven years, something would happen in the middle, that the, there would be a peace treaty to begin the first, uh, the, there would be a peace treaty to start the last seven years. And then in the middle of the seven years, the, the treaty would be broken and the beast would come, the antichrist would come to start his reign. Okay, so just to show you, that last three and a half years, often the Bible represents it by one thousand two hundred and sixty days. What is one hun- one thousand two hundred and sixty days? How long is that? Three and a half years. So you'll see it referred to as one thousand two hundred and sixty days. You, you'll see it referred to as forty-two months. Right? Forty-two months is three and a half years. Right? Twelve times three, which is thirty-six plus six, forty-two. And then sometimes it's referred to as time and times and half a time. Time is one, times, times is two, and half a time, three and a half, right? So that's three and a half. So this is a very significant period of time that the Bible refers to. Okay, so last night, we were focusing on the time before the last three and a half years. And what would happen in the last three and a half years? You'll see here that the sixth seal is opened. And what happens during the sixth seal? A lot of natural disasters. The mountains are moved out of place, a great earthquake, stars falling from heaven. And the people of the earth, they, they were so scared. They said, protect us, save us from the great day of God's wrath. That means the sixth seal, after the sixth seal, the great day of God's wrath would begin. Okay, so that is where, uh, where we marked this red portion here is the great day of God's wrath. But before the great day of God's wrath, God is going to do something. Because God is very merciful to us. What does he do? Do you think it's, yeah, there's rapture? So it's like, uh, you know, do you remember the story of Sodom and Gomorrah? And Abraham prayed, tried to bargain with God. God said, what was, what did God want to do? He wanted to destroy the whole city of Sodom and Gomorrah. But what did Abraham say to him? If there's even fifty righteous people, will you destroy the city? And God said, no, I will not. And then he said, if there are thirty or something like that, and he kept going down. He's trying to, God, so even if there are a certain number of people, God will try to protect them. And of course, there weren't that many people. But God found a way, God was still merciful to do what? He sent a couple of angels to save Lot and his wife and the family out. Right? He, he, it was not, it would not be righteous if Lot, who was righteous, the Bible called Lot a righteous man. And allows right, uh, Lot to be destroyed with the rest of the city. So God still found a way to get him out. Same with, with Noah, the time of Noah. Remember that? So God, what did he do? Did he just flood everything and let everybody die? No, he told Noah to build an ark to save himself and his family. Right? So they were saved out, so God could preserve those people. And in the same way, this is going to be like Sodom and Gomorrah and the flood, but except much, much worse. So God still, because he doesn't change, he still looks for a way to save the ones who are righteous. So what does he do? Firstly, in chapter seven, you see, he always remembered his promise to Abraham and to the Jewish people. He never forgets that. So even here, at this time, a hundred and forty-four thousand of the Jews were sealed on their forehead with the seal of God to protect them from the coming great day of God's wrath. Right? And also, of course, the dead, the ones who are dead, the Christians who are faithful, the overcomers, they were raptured. And also the living Christians who are faithful and matured, they are also raptured. They're taken up. And so John in chapter seven, what did he see? He saw a multitude of people. It says, they were all clothed with robes washed in the blood of the lamb, made white. And they were praising the Lord. And he saw them there, and it says that they had come out of great tribulation. So they had gone through a lot of suffering for the Lord in order to come out there. So that tells us that if you want to be among the people who are saved from the coming judgment, you need to be someone who is willing to suffer a lot for the Lord. You know, many times I'm thinking, sometimes just a little bit of hardship, we're already complaining. A little inconvenience. You know, for ourselves, we can do so much. But even just a little inconvenience for the Lord, we're already complaining. But these overcomers, for example, they were even willing to die for the Lord. So it really requires, for us to be raptured, we really need to sacrifice everything in our life for the Lord. It is a big price, but it is a huge reward. Right? We can read in chapter seven what it says here. Chapter seven, verse nine. We're going to read a lot today, which is good. So chapter nine, uh, seven, verse nine. It says, after these things, I looked and behold, a great multitude which no one could number, of all nations, tribes, peoples, and tongues standing before the throne and before the Lamb, clothed in white robes with palm branches in their hands, and crying out with a loud voice saying, salvation belongs to our God, who sits on the throne and to the Lamb. All the angels stood around the throne and the elders and the four living creatures and fell on their faces before the throne and worshiped God, saying, amen. Blessing and glory and wisdom, thanksgiving and honor and power and might be to our God forever and ever. Amen. Then one of the elders answered, saying to me, who are these parade in white robes and where did they come from? And I said to him, sir, you know. So he said to me, these are the ones who come out of the great tribulation and washed their robes and made them white in the blood of the Lamb. Therefore they are before the throne of God and serve him day and night in the temple. And he who sits on the throne will dwell among them. They shall neither hunger anymore nor thirst anymore. The sun shall not strike them nor any heat. For the Lamb who is in the midst of the throne will shepherd them and lead them to living fountains of waters. And God will wipe away every tear from their eyes. So these people, they can already experience this. They can already enjoy this, this blessing from the Lord. Alright, so to be in his presence all the time. So this is really wonderful, but they had to pay a big price for that, a very big price. And then there was a question of uh, is this, we know that in chapter fourteen of Revelation, it said that how many people were there? It said, hundred and forty-four thousand. Is that the same as this hundred and forty-four thousand? It's no, it's nuts, right? How do we know that? Because in chapter fourteen, in chapter fourteen, it says here, verse four, that these people, they are ones who were not defiled with women, for they are virgins. These are the ones who follow the Lamb wherever he goes. Right? These were redeemed from among men being firsters to God and to the Lamb. So they follow the Lamb wherever he goes. So that means they're not Jews, because the Jews do not follow the Lamb. Right? The Lamb is Jesus. The Jews don't believe in Jesus. But the ones in chapter seven, they were listed out by tribe. Right? It's a twelve thousand for each tribe. So they can't be Christians, because we Christians don't belong to any Jewish tribe, right? Like I asked yesterday, you know, who was, Ronnie, what tribe do you belong to? What Jewish tribe? Are you Benjamin? Are you Levi? You don't know, right? You're not, because you're nuts. So, you know, but you are someone hopefully that follows the Lamb. Right? So that means that these, this group, the two groups of a hundred and forty-four thousand are different. And this hundred and forty-four thousand of the Jews, because God's dealing with the Jewish people, in, even in the Old Testament times, it was always more literal. You know, it was not as, for, in the New Testament, the dealings with, with the Christians has always been more symbolic. Right? More based on symbols and metaphors. Uh, but what he did with the Jews was always more physical and literal. So the hundred and forty-four thousand in chapter seven is most likely a literal number. But the hundred and forty-four thousand in chapter fourteen is likely not literal. Because if it was, and imagine, let's say, Osie was the last of a hundred and forty-four thousand, oh, uh, first fruit. Then I have no chance, because the number has been fulfilled, right? No, we know that it's, it's not, right? Hundred and forty-four is twelve times twelve, which is times a thousand, which is basically, if, uh, the number twelve represents completion. So in God's mind, he knows, he, he has a number that needs to be fulfilled and that number will be fulfilled when it happens. Okay? So I think every, everybody is okay so far? Yeah, alright. And then in chapter, uh, chapter eight, we see the, the seven trumpets. So here, I made a little change to this box here. So in chapter twelve, we saw that the man child, the, the overcomers, the dead Christians were raptured. There was a war in heaven. The dragon went up when the dead overcomers were raptured up. The dragon, Satan followed up to heaven. They started, there was a war in heaven. And then the dragon was cast down because the overcomers defeated him. Okay, so this coincides with chapter nine. Let's read chapter nine. It says in chapter nine, verse one, then the fifth angel sounded and I saw a star falling from heaven to the earth. Okay, this is not a, not a, like a meteor or asteroid or something. But this is a, this is the dragon. How do we know? Because it says to him, a star is not a him normally. So we know that the star represents a, a person or something. And to him, this star was given the key to the bottomless pit. So the dragon, Satan, he, he was cast down to the earth. And then he was given the key to the bottomless pit. And we'll look at chapter nine soon. And just before that happens, the first four trumpets were blown. And this will probably, all these things, remember, these are very potentially, they will start very soon in our lifetime. If, uh, if the treaty that Daniel nine speaks of, Daniel chapter nine, if the treaty that it refers to is indeed the Abraham Accords that was signed in August twenty-twenty, then it is very possible that these things could begin next year. Okay, it's very potential to be very soon. Because the prophecy in Daniel nine gives us seven years. And in the middle of the seven years, it will be broken, the treaty will be broken. And it's a treaty, and the treaty, when it's signed, it signifies the beginning of the last seven years. So that means that since twenty-twenty till now, it's almost two years. Right? So, uh, no, it's twenty, twenty-two years, right? The twenty-twenty-three right now, so, yeah, so it's, it's two and a half years already. Right? So we, it's very possible, not saying a hundred percent, but it could be very soon. Right? Okay, so the first four trumpets, let's take a look in chapter eight. We can see what this is. Firstly, God will judge creation. Verse seven, he mentions here that the first trumpet was blown and a third of the trees were burned up and all green grass was burned up. And the second angel sounded, something like a great mountain burning with fire was thrown into the sea. And a third of the sea became blood. And a third of the living creatures in the sea died. And a third of the ships were destroyed. And then the third trumpet, a great star fell from heaven burning like a torch and it fell on a third of the rivers and on the springs of water. And the name of the star is Wormwood. A third of the waters became wormwood. And many men died from the water because it was made bitter. And then the fourth trumpet, then the fourth angel sounded and a third of the sun was struck, a third of the moon and a third of the stars, so that a third of them were darkened. A third of the day did not shine and likewise the night. And I looked and I heard an angel flying through the midst of heaven, saying with a loud voice, woe, 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 to the inhabitants of the earth. So now firstly, the first four trumpets were not directed against the inhabitants of the earth. But now, five, six, and seven are against them. So because there are three more trumpets left, so he says, woe, 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 three times, right, for each of the trumpets. Because of the remaining blasts of the trumpets of the three angels who were about to sound. This is a very terrible time. Okay, so we have here that the great day of God's wrath starts with the three, first four trumpets. And now we're going to start the last one thousand two hundred and sixty days. Now we are started with the fifth trumpet. So what happens during the last three and a half years exactly? Well, there's a few things, so let's look at this. First of all, we have, we'll go in order with the, uh, the outline that I shared with you all. In Daniel chapter nine, think of, you know, just try to imagine this, right? This is a very, um, I don't think we want to be here. So in Daniel chapter nine, then the fifth angel sounded and I saw a star fall, okay, we read this, okay, he opened the bottomless pit. Revelation, uh, Revelation nine, sorry, Revelation nine. Verse two, and he opened the bottomless pit. And imagine, there's, there's actually a bottomless pit on the earth somewhere. And it's going to be open. You know, some people say it's actually in the Mediterranean Sea, under the sea somewhere. We don't know where it is. And the smoke arose out of the pit like the smoke of a great furnace. So imagine a huge black smoke came out. So the sun and the air were darkened because of the smoke of a right? It's so thick over the whole earth. Then out of the smoke, locusts came out upon the earth. You know what a locust is? It's like a big grasshopper. Okay, and to them was given power, as the scorpions of the earth have power. They were commanded not to harm the grass of the earth or any green thing or any tree, but only those men who do not have the seal of God on their foreheads. So this is going to attack the non-believers. The people who are not, who are not Jews that were sealed in chapter seven, and also not the Christians. So imagine your, your neighbors, your coworkers, your friends, even family members. This is why we feel really sad for our family members. They will be, they will have to go through this, right? And they were not given authority to kill them. They couldn't kill them, right? Not allowed, but to torment them for five months. Their torment was like the torment of a scorpion when it strikes a man. I've never been stung by a scorpion, but I'm sure I'll, mind if you turn your phones off. I've never been stung by a scorpion, but I'm sure it's not, not very nice. I've been stung by a bee before and it was pretty bad. I can't imagine what a scorpion would be like for five months constantly. Their torment was like the torment of a scorpion when it strikes a man. In those days, men will seek death. That's how bad, there's, it's so painful that they want to die. But they can't die. They will not find it. They will desire to die. Maybe even they'll try to kill themselves, but they cannot kill themselves. It says death will flee from them. Right? I've never seen anything like this. And the shape of the locust was like horses prepared for battle. On their heads were crowns or something like gold. And their faces were like the faces of men. They had hair like women's hair and their teeth were like lions' teeth. So imagine the whole air is full of these things. Right? It's a thick cloud. And they had breastplates, like breastplates And they had breastplates like breastplates of iron and the sound of their wings like the sound of chariots with many horses running into battle. They had tails like scorpions and there were stings in their tails, their power was to hurt men five months. And they had as king over them, the angel of the bottomless pit whose name in Hebrew is Abaddon, but in Greek he has a name Apollion. One woe is past, that's only the first one. There's two more left. Behold, still two more woes are coming after these things. So that's happening in chapter nine. And then now the sixth trumpet. Verse thirteen, it says, the sixth angel sounded and I heard a voice from the four horns of the golden altar which is before God saying to the sixth angel who had the trumpet, release the four angels who are bound at the great river Euphrates. So the four angels who had been prepared for the hour and day and month and year were released to kill a third of mankind. Imagine that. Uh there, how many people are in the world right now?
Eight billion.
Eight billion. A third of that, eight divided by three, one point two five, something like that. That's, oh, two point seven, two point seven. So two point seven billion people will be killed. Imagine that, that's crazy. How many people are in Canada? Thirty-five million. That's more than the population of Canada, the US is three hundred and fifty million. China is like one point eight now probably. Many, many people. Many people will be killed. Now, the number of the army of the horsemen, right? He they released with the sixth trumpet. How many horsemen were there? Two hundred million. Two hundred million horsemen and I heard the number of them. And thus I saw the horses in the vision, those who sat on them had breastplates of fiery red, ice and blue, sulfur yellow and the heads of the horses were like the heads of lions and out of their mouth came fire, smoke and brimstone. And by these three plagues, a third of mankind was killed by the fire, the smoke and the brimstone which came out of their mouths. For their power is in their mouths and in their tails, for their tails are like serpents having heads and with them they do harm. But the rest of mankind who were not killed by these plagues did not repent of the works with of their hands and that they should not worship demons and idols of gold, silver, brass, stone and wood which can neither see nor hear nor walk. And they did not repent of their murders or their sorceries or their sexual immorality or their thefts. Can you imagine how hardened the heart of man has become? Even after you see all these things happening, they still refuse to repent. You know, sometimes people say, well, if I saw some miracles, if I saw a sign from God, then I will, I'll believe in him. But here you can see, even though the Lord chose so much, they still refuse to repent. They don't want to change. You know, and I think maybe, I I think that some of these trumpets, you know what they're gonna say? They're probably gonna say this is climate change. This is caused by climate change. Oh, you see the the seas and its environmental disaster, they're not gonna say it's God. Or the, you know, the locusts and the horsemen, uh they're gonna blame it on some disease. Right? Covid three point O or something. You know, or they're gonna, they're be so uh numb in their heart because of all the Hollywood movies. Right? Have you seen movies where there's zombies? Zombie movies and stuff like that? Alien invasion, they're they're just so numb to it. People don't care anymore. They have no fear of. Alright, so you know, it it's just going to be uh it, when I read this, I thought, how can people not repent after this? But today you can really see they have such a hardened heart. People have such, are so hardened, they don't want, they don't care. Now, the next thing that happens, go to chapter eleven. Because of God's mercy. You see here in chapter eleven, what do we have? We have the locusts, we have the two hundred horsemen. And next in chapter eleven, we see two witnesses. So we go here. Uh verse three. Eleven, verse three, it says, I will give power to my two witnesses and they will prophesy what? One thousand two hundred and sixty days, quote and saqah. So they will be around prophesying, preaching, warning people, just like the prophets in the Old Testament, they warn people to turn back to God, to repent because God is going to judge. And they did this for one thousand two hundred and sixty days. Okay? It says in verse five, if anyone wants to harm them, fire proceeds from their mouth and devours their enemies. If anyone wants to harm them, he must be killed in this matter manner. They have power to shut heaven so that no rain falls in the days of their prophecy and they have power over waters to turn them to blood and to strike the earth with all plagues as often as they desire. When they finish their testimony, the beast that ascends out of the bottomless pit will make war against them, overcome them and kill them. So at the end, they will be killed, this is actually not exactly here, it'll be at the very end, that they are killed by the beast, the Antichrist. And it says, their dead bodies will lie in the street of the great city which is spiritually called Sodom and Gomorrah where our Lord was crucified. Where is this? Where was the Lord crucified? Jerusalem, he was crucified outside Jerusalem, so we know that they will be killed in Jerusalem. And then those from the people, from the peoples, tribes, tongues and nations will see their dead bodies three and a half days and not allow their dead bodies to put into graves. And those who dwell on the earth will rejoice over them, make merry and send gifts to one another because these two prophets tormented those who dwell on the earth. This is what happens when your heart becomes so hardened. Even if people warn you, they ask, they plead with you to repent, you just hate it so much, they get, they hated it so much, it tormented them. They they hated God so much that when these people died, they were so happy. Right? That not only were they hardened in their heart, but they ended up hating God. And these two witnesses, actually, it's very possible that they're Moses and Elijah. How do we know that? Well, this says because in verse six, that they caused um no rain to fall, they have the power to shut heaven to, so that no rains falls. Elijah did that while he was alive. And Moses also, he turned water into blood, right? One of the plagues when he would strike the water, it would it would turn into blood. And remember, Elijah and Moses never died. Well, Moses died, but God took his body away, so nobody ever saw him. So uh it's very, in Elijah, God took him up into heaven, he was raptured. So they will, it's very possible that they will come back. But even with such prophets like them, people still do not listen. So you can see, even during this time, God is still very merciful. He doesn't just turn it back on them completely, he still gives people a chance to improve their lives. But of course, they're killed and then they're resurrected and they're taken up to heaven. Okay? Jerusalem is trodden underfoot, we saw. And then in chapter thirteen, let's look at the the Antichrist himself. So during this time, during the one thousand two hundred and sixty days, it's a time that will be ruled over by the beast. And the beast is someone that comes, his soul comes out of the bottomless pit. And and here we can see more about this in chapter thirteen. It says, then I stood on the sand of the sea and I saw a beast rising out of the sea, having seven heads and ten horns, and on his horns ten crowns and on his head a blasphemous name. Uh okay, it describes what he looks like. Verse three, it says, I saw one of his heads as if it had been mortally wounded and his deadly wound was healed. And all of the world marvelled and followed the beast. So the beast will very likely be somebody who was assassinated. So he has a mortal wound, probably shot in the head, but somehow he's resurrected. So people will be amazed. Oh, I, he's supposed to be dead, how is he alive again? He has this, he was shot in the head. They've been assassinated, right? So they all were amazed and they started to follow him. And they worshipped, verse four, they worshipped the dragon, Satan who gave authority to the beast. And they worshipped the beast saying, who is like the beast, who is able to make war with him? And he was given a mouth speaking great things and blasphemies and was given authority to continue for forty-two months. Again, that's the four, the three and a half years. And he opened his mouth in blasphemy against God to blaspheme his name, his tabernacle and those who dwell in heaven. It was granted to him to make war with the saints and to overcome them and authority was given him over every tribe, tongue and nation. So during this time, during this this forty-two month period, the beast will will make war with the saints. So if anybody is left here on the earth during that time, it will be extremely difficult because the beast will be going after you and me, right? We will be, he will be attacking us, he hates God. And today you can see that the world is starting to go in this direction. More and more people hate God. You know, I don't know if you heard, but even just last week, the, in Canada, uh you know, the, I think it's on the the you know that Canada is a Commonwealth country, right? We are the head of state, who is the head of state of Canada? Huh? King Charles, he is the actual, Canada actually comes under the headship of the British Crown. So we actually belong to under under King Charles now, okay? And so Canada always uh features some uh royal uh symbols and things on different documents and and all, you know, around Ottawa, you'll see that, right? To show that we, even on our money, right? There was Queen Elizabeth's face on the twenty-dollar bill, on coins. You know, because we belong to uh, the the country falls under that. So one of the symbols that Canada uses is the crown of England. And on the crown there are crosses. But this week Trudeau decided to redesign the 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 symbol of the crown. What did he do? He removed the crosses and he put meaningfulness. Right? He's trying to erase anything that has to do with Christianity in the culture. In in the schools too. They're trying to erase, when I was growing up, in the schools, what did we do every morning? If you know, every morning, every day in school, we would first sing the national anthem and then we would recite the Lord's prayer. And then after a while, after many years of that, some parents got angry and said, no, we don't want to uh hear the Lord's prayer anymore, so they got rid of the Lord's prayer. So gradually, gradually, Canada started off as a Christian country. Same with the US, it started off founded as a Christian country. But more and more, they're trying to eliminate God from every place. In the schools, in the workplaces, in the government. There used to be uh, in the Quebec legislature, there used to be a cross hanging there. They took it down. They don't want any any notice, mention or any reminder of God anywhere. Why? Because they're worried it'll offend the non-Christians. Why are, why should we be afraid of offending non-Christians if we believe the truth, right? But that's what they want to do and more and more they're finding, you know, uh Christians are being seen as holding offensive beliefs. You know? I told, some of you may have known, several weeks ago, there was a shooting, a school shooting in uh Tennessee, in the US. What kind of school was it, you know? There was a Christian school. And the shooter was a transgender. Basically, uh it was a girl who was dressed up like a boy and she she wanted to identify as a boy. And so she started to go into the school and shoot people, she killed six people. And the the news media did not say anything about the people that died. Usually if you if you hear about a shooting or something, you'll, they want to commemorate the the victims. But in this case, they celebrated the shooter. Because they said that the shooter, it's, you know, transgender people have to face so much suffering, so it was justified. They actually said that. That it was justified to go and and do this. They were, the gen, the transgender people are pushed to their limit and they have nothing else to do but to, you know, to uh show their their frustration and wrath, like that. They don't mention anything about the Christians that died. Why? Because they don't care. They don't care that Christians die. And so that's, that's how society is getting more and more closer like that. Right? So when it says here that he will war against the saints, it really is something that is starting to happen more. Right? So it says here in verse eight, all who dwell on the earth will worship him whose names have not been written in the book of life of the lamb slain from the foundation of the world. If anyone has an ear, let him hear. And he who leads into captivity shall go into captivity, he who kills with a sword must be killed with a sword. Here is the patience and the faith of the saints. So that means that even those saints who are left behind, in order to stand for their faith, they will have to be led into captivity and killed. Many Christians during that time will be imprisoned, tortured and put into prison. And then executed. It's a very terrible time. So and then it continues on here, there's another beast. Okay, um, it says in verse fourteen, he deceives those who dwell on the earth by those signs which he was granted to do in the sight of the beast, telling those who dwell on the earth to make an image of the beast who was wounded by the sword and lived. He was granted power to give breath to the image of the beast and the image the beast should both speak and cause as many as would not worship the image of the beast to be killed. So if you refuse to worship that idol, you will be killed. Imagine that, it's really terrible. Someone forces you, what would you do? If someone forced you to worship this idol? You know, today, even many people, they were forced to take a vaccine or else they would lose their job, they were forced to do it. Right? But what about here? Then you weren't gonna be killed for that. People weren't going to be killed to do that. But just the fear of losing their jobs was enough to stop people, to cause people to go along with it. But here you can see that someone will force us one day to worship this beast. Here, if you don't do it, you will die. What would we do? What are we going to do, right? It is a, it's a very, so we really have to see that, um, you know, we, can we really, are we really willing to give up our life for the Lord? Not to deny him. So that's why I'm saying that today, we already have to learn this exercise of being willing to give up our life for the Lord. You know, our conveniences, our comforts, our pleasure, difficulties, be willing to to suffer difficulties. Be willing to, to suffer difficulty in hardship for the Lord. Because one day, it will get to this, where your life will be in danger if you don't worship the beast. It's a very difficult decision. Today, they've already tried to force many people, threatening them with losing their jobs. You know? So, I'm not talking about whether the vaccine is right or wrong, but the problem is that they forced people to do it. They made it, and Trudeau even said, I never forced anybody. Well, you've made it so that if they didn't take it, they would lose their jobs. They couldn't travel, they couldn't go to restaurants, they couldn't do so many things. So you made life as difficult as possible to coerce people to do it. No other drug or anything. They never, not, nothing in our society is like that, but he used this thing to do it. So that tells us that already it's setting up people with that type of thinking, that they're willing to give up their own decision-making and freedom in order to, just to live. And this is what's going to happen during this time. When people are willing to just go along with the lies in order to buy or sell. Right? So it says that those who, you know, if you don't do this, in verse sixteen, it says, he causes all, both small and great, rich and poor, free and slave, to receive a mark on their right hand or on their foreheads, that no one may buy or sell except one who has the mark or the name of the beast or the number of his name. So he controls all the money, basically. And this is why today already we're headed towards this. How? Today, if I want to buy some, let's say, let's say, uh, you know, I, I tell OC, you're not allowed to buy or sell, but he still has some cash. So he can just, if he wants to buy something from me, we can just do it in secret, right? He gives me some cash, I give him some food. Nobody will know, it's untrace, you can't trace it. The government won't know. But now, just this week, the last week, the, the Bank of Canada initiated a new, they started, uh, uh, to investigate how to implement a central bank digital currency. So meaning that this, they're going to eliminate cash and all transactions will be electronic. And everything will be, and they'll be able to control whether you can make these transactions or not. I heard in Nigeria, they already have this, the E, E Naira, right? Yeah, Europe is working on this, UK is, are, have already started to work on this, China has it already. Or they were telling me even a, even a street vendor, old granny, they have to tap on the phone to, to, it's not cash anymore. So the world is going, why do they do this? It's because if you don't follow the rules, then you don't deserve to eat. You don't deserve to travel. You don't deserve to do any, that's what they did during Covid. If you don't get the vaccine, you don't deserve to go to the hospital. You don't deserve to enjoy the, the travel. That's what they did. They made, they made a division between two, they separated society, they divided. And they made the people who didn't go along with them to seem like they're terrible people. Right? So they'll say, you don't deserve to eat because you're not going along with our rules and they'll shut down your money. And they did that last February during the truckers protest. Those people who protested against Trudeau, they shut down their bank accounts. I heard people, they went to the Tim Hortons and they put in their debit card and it said transaction denied. They couldn't even use it to buy a coffee. They have such control over that, right? Just because those people didn't agree. And they claimed that they, oh, well, it was right to, to do this because they blocked critical infrastructure. Well, two weeks ago, the, the public service union employees blocked, they actually blocked bridges and roads, but they were never, their bank accounts were never frozen. You couldn't even renew your passport, your taxes, nobody's looking at your, nobody's working at the CRA to, you know, review your tax return. They all stopped working. But somehow, that's okay, but if people disagree with the government, that's not okay. Right? So this is what's, this is, you have to see that this is where the world is heading now. That everything is shaping up more and more to become, to, to, uh, for the time of the beast. Right? So Yeah, so, okay, chapter fourteen now, what, this is another thing that happens. During the, the time of the, the last three and a half years, during the one thousand two hundred and sixty days. So in verse six, it says, I saw another angel flying in the midst of heaven, having the everlasting gospel to preach to those who dwell on the earth, to every nation, tribe, tongue, and people. So you have to understand, during this time, today, we preach the gospel of salvation. And when people believe in Jesus, they can receive eternal life, right? But at this time, it's different, it's no longer that gospel because that time has passed. The time of grace is over, so now who's preaching the gospel? It's not people anymore, it's an angel. And the, and the angel is preaching the gospel to all the people of the world, but this time, it's a different gospel. It's not believe in Jesus and your sins will be forgiven and you'll receive eternal life, what is it? Verse seven is saying, saying with a loud voice, fear God and give glory to Him. For the hour of His judgment has come, and worship Him who made heaven and earth, the sea and springs of water. So this is what he's preaching now, he's preaching to the people of the earth to fear God and give Him glory. He's still giving them a chance. If they receive it, they'll be able to continue on into the millennial kingdoms. But they will not, of course, they won't be able to sit on the throne with us. So they have this possibility. They, they, the Lord still wants to, even then, still show mercy to some, to the people. And then, yeah, and then, uh, there's a proclamation that Babylon is fallen because she made the nations drink of the wine of the wrath of her conciliation, okay? Okay, that's chapter fourteen, so there's one more chance. And then chapter fifteen, another thing that happens. Do you see here? Then I saw another sign in heaven, great and marvelous, seven angels having the seven last plagues for in them the wrath of God is complete. So that's the seven last bowls, seven bowls. In verse two, and I saw something like a sea of glass mingled with fire, and those who have victory over the beast, over His image and over His mark and over the number of His name, standing on the sea of glass, having harps of God. And, and they sing a song of Moses, the servant of God, the song of the Lamb, saying, great and marvelous are your works, Lord God Almighty. Just and true are your ways, O king of the saints, who shall not fear you, who, who shall not fear you, O Lord, and glorify your name, for you alone are holy. For all nations shall come and worship before you, for your judgments have been manifested. So this is, these people, they had, who are they? It says, they have victory, this is in heaven, they have victory over the beast in His image. That means that they had encountered the beast. Right? If you, there's, that means that these, since they had encountered the beast, and that means that these are people who were left behind on the earth during the, the great day of God's wrath. So this victory over the beast, it means that they had been martyred by the beast. Right? So they were killed. So these people, so in order to, so that mean, that again shows you that there will be many martyrs, many people who gave up their life. So they were able to, to die for the Lord. So you can see here that, that it will be a very difficult time for Christians. So, you know, to be a, the Christian life, there is no way to have no suffering. There will definitely have to be suffering in our life. Sacrificing of ourselves, giving up of ourselves. And that's why it has to happen, it needs to happen before. Otherwise, if, if the only way for us, if we remain here, is to be martyred. Or somehow you're successful in hiding from the beast. But you can't buy or sell, so how do you eat? Somebody has to help you and buy food for you. And secretly, it's just like the time of the, in the Nazis, right? When the Jews were hiding, there were some, some Germans who were nice enough to, to, uh, take care of people, of the Jews, they hid them in their homes. So, you know, this will be something that we will have to go through too possibly, you know? Because if you go out anywhere, you could be spotted, you could be taken to prison and then tortured and killed. It's a very, I, I don't think anybody here has ever tasted anything like that. Maybe in Iran, you've seen similar things, right? In Iran, it's not safe for Christians. Also, when China is not safe for Christians, many cases. So, but this persecution will happen over the whole earth. And it's also very sad to see that, you know, many of the non-believers, non, uh, you know, non-Christians that we know, they will have to very possibly be, uh, killed as well. For us living in Canada, it's relatively comfortable. We haven't encountered that type of physical suffering. He who dwells is, you have not encountered bloodshed yet, right? But maybe one day we will, hope not, right? That's why, for us, it's very urgent to be among this, it is very, very urgent to be one of the first of us. And, and this is why the, today, a lot of the interpretation of the end times is inaccurate. Because many Christians, they say that everybody will be raptured before the end. But we clearly see that the beast is making war against the saints. And there are martyrs who face the beast and die. So definitely, there will be Christians during this time. But not everybody will go, go through that because we also saw that there were people who were raptured. And there were people who John saw in heaven before the first four trumpets were blown. So there are people there. And they had come through suffering. So that's why we have to realize, there is, not everybody will be raptured. But not everybody will go through this. So, you know, uh, we really have to, uh, you know, pay attention to, to what, uh, what the Lord is trying to show us. But you can see how, you know, the Lord allows all this to happen because the world is extremely evil. He has to judge it. And the judgment will be, actually, this is not even the end, there's still more judgment coming. Remember, there's still seven bowls. We're only at the second bowl, there's still one more bowl left. Right? There's still seven bowls down there. And then, of course, there's the final battle between the beast and the world's armies and against Christ. So, well, that will be for this evening, but for, for this afternoon, we're just focusing on this part. Okay? Good work, very good.
Yeah, we can, no, no, I think we should, we need to say some prayers because, the things that happen after we listen to such speaking, you know, you're so scared, or, or we want to give up. I like to read something in Matthew, chapter sixteen. I like to read verses one, two, and three. And the Pharisees on the side of the seas came and tested him, asked that he would show them the signs of the times. He answered and said to them, he answered and said to them, when it is evening, you say it will be fair weather, for the sky is red. And in the morning, it will be foul weather today, for the sky is red and trembling. Hypocrites, you know how to descend the face of the sky? Well, how cannot, but you cannot descend the signs of the times. The whole essence of this fellowship is for us to take these things back to the Lord. And if you check everything happening, um, I'm not sure we're strange to any of them. So that tells us that it's sooner than we imagine. And what do we take out of the meeting, what do we take out of the fellowship is to turn our heart back to the Lord. If we don't do that, then the whole essence is defeated. We're not just trying to, um, trying to gain some additional knowledge. If, if this is the purpose, I mean, there are so many encyclopedias. But the whole essence is to stir up our spirit so that we can, you know, mean business with the Lord, knowing that the times are very close. And the things we see in Revelation, most of them are signs. So there are probably things that are already happening that because they are signs, we are not relating it directly to what we have read. But ultimately, the time is very, very close. What, what the brother said about the, about the preparation for the last days, I read it a month ago, it's, it's an agreement made by the World Bank and Economic Forum. And it's going to go around, you know? They're trying to connect it to even the Bitcoins and the, the, the blockchains and things like that. And if you look at even in, in the internet and in the social media, there is no hiding place. So it tells us that the whole place is being prepared. What do we do? Maybe we should take these things we've heard and say some prayer to the Lord, that the Lord will keep us awake so that we do not sleep.
I had two questions. And when I spoke to some, uh, other, there are other Christians who believe in the, the tribulation time, right? There's a disagreement on the three and a half and seven years. Some believe that it's seven years and not three and a half years. There's some clarification.
Why? Okay. I'm not quite sure why people say it's, I can use, yeah, okay, I'll use this. I'm not quite sure why people say it's, um, seven years. Um, there's actually nothing that says that it's seven years. But there are, everything that we can see, like we read in chapter thirteen, that the beast reigns for one thousand two hundred and sixty days. And then we also read that the, uh, the dragon was cast down for, uh, also that length of time, right? The, the will, uh, the witnesses are there for forty-two, uh, one thousand two hundred and sixty days. So all these things, it actually mentions the length of time that they will be there. And also Daniel as well mentioned, okay, let's read another verse here in Daniel, chapter twelve. It tells you as well.
Actually, in Daniel, chapter twelve, some people understand that after the first three and a half years, some people understand that after the first three and a half years, there's a break of another three and a half years before the last three and a half years. That's where they get the seven years. Yeah, if you read it from verses, uh, six to, to eight, that's why, so, Daniel, chapter 12, the, the last chapter. So some people still hold, strongly hold that if it, after the first three and a half years, that there's going to be another three and a half years. That's a break. It, it looks as if it's implied here in verse eight. But my reaction, as the brother wants to explain, my reaction is, whether it's three and a half years or whether it's seven years. But the problem is, are you ready? And whoever told you that you'll have tomorrow? Yeah, which is more imminent, right? If we are not certain that we have tomorrow, we should be ready today. We don't have to wait for three and a half years. And if, if the, the agreement that was signed is eight, well, you don't even have that three and a half years now.
Yeah. So basically in chapter 12, it says here, verse seven, it says, um, just the, the latter half. It says, "It shall be for a time, times and half a time, and when the power of the holy people has been completely shattered, then all these things shall be finished." Okay, um, and then, he said, "My Lord, when shall be, what shall be the end of these things?" And then it says here, um, in verse 11, from the time that the daily sacrifice was taken away, that coincides with Daniel 9:27, when the, the beast stops the daily sacrifice, then the abomination of desolation is set up. So the beast is going to set up an idol in the temple. There shall be 1,290 days. So there's an extra, he adds an extra 30 days. It's possible that it could be this portion here. It's a very short period after the 1,260 days. But still, that is approximately three and a half years. Right? So there's actually, there's a lot more indication that the period is three and a half years. Right? Especially if, it clearly says that the beast was given authority for forty-two months. Right? It, it says forty-two months, not eighty-four months. So, then, then it, it's, I mean, that's probably the, that's why we, we usually go by that three and a half years. And plus Daniel 9:27 says, "The last week, which is seven, divided into two. It was broken in two. That's when the beast appears." In the middle.
The other question was that, uh, the women in the wilderness is actually Christians, right? And they are, or the ones who are still alive?
They're dead. They're all dead. So all the, so here, yeah, so, um, this is what we, we read yesterday, okay? So in Daniel, chapter 12, uh, in Revelation, chapter 12. So, remember the, the woman is, the woman was pregnant and gave birth. And so the man, the man-child, her baby, was described as a man. He's fully grown, which means that he's matured already. But it's a smaller portion of the woman. So that, that tells us that the woman is the larger body, but then the child is a subset of that. And that subset is more mature. And so that's why he was taken up. And that's also why the dragon was not interested in the woman at first, but more interested in the man-child. So, and we read in verse 10, it says that they, uh, verse 11, "They did not love their lives to the death." So that tells us that this subset, the man-child, was dead already. They, they were martyrs. They did not love their lives even to the point of death. So if the subset is, are dead, then that implies that the whole body were also dead. Because the treatment of the living ones is, the living Christians is mentioned in chapter 14. So chapter 12 is something, is a, a different group of people. Right? So, um, and also, we know they're not living people because the woman was later taken into the wilderness. But we know that the living ones, they had to face, go through this time. So the woman was taken into the wilderness where she was fed and nurtured for a period of time. So she was in a peaceful place. But the living ones had to go through the time of the beast. So that means that this cannot be the living ones. It has to be dead. Does that, does that make sense? It doesn't say, the, the thing with Revelation is also that it, there are a lot of things that are not spoken explicitly, but you have to kind of deduce it based on clues that you read in other places. Right? So, uh, hopefully that, that's enough.